I think we're good.
All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the Atsigo City Council meeting. Tonight is Monday, November 28th. Sabrina, are you the one taking minutes this evening? All right. Can you have the records show that our city attorneys, the planners, the engineer, and all council members are present, along with the Assistant City Administrator and the Administrator? At this time, I'll ask you all to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the best of circumstances.
So our first item this evening is a special recognition of our 2020, 2022 election judges. Bethany is unable to be in person, so she will be joining us via Zoom. So I will turn it over to Bethany.
All right. I hope everybody can hear me. Madam Mayor, council members, city staff. I'm saddened that I'm not here in person, but it's kind of neat to be on the other side and zoom in. But I would like to take some time to recognize some great people, and I cannot see the audience, but I'm only assuming that there's a handful of them for sure in there. Many voters may be surprised to learn that the people most responsible for our elections are our own community members who have served as an election judge. They are friends, neighbors, coworkers, and family members who have taken an oath and promised to perform duties in a fair and impartial manner and not attempt to create an advantage for their party or for any other candidate. To me, it doesn't matter what party you affiliate with, the more registered voters who vote, the more likely our government is to represent all of us. I know many of us can relate in seeing first time voters with smiles on their faces or to have met older people who have been proud that they have never missed an election. I want to express my gratitude to a couple of judges who have put in the greatest number of hours. I'm hoping in the crowd tonight, Sonia Nelson, Ann Ness, and Robin Hilli are out there. Without these three, I am not sure how Atsigo elections would have gotten everything done. And I do want to make a note that both Sonia and Ann have been the backbone ever since Atsigo offered this extended service in 2020. To our 80-plus election judges who worked anywhere from eight to seventeen and a half hours on just the election day, making sure the rest of us can vote, thank you. The work is not always easy, however, the role is essential to the functioning of our democracy. To our eight head judges Suzanne, Norm, AJ, Natalie, Julie, Tracy, Ann, and Jackie. I mean, they are all rock star leaders, and I know the clerk's office couldn't have done it without them. To our ballot board judges putting in countless hours who has helped with the absentee process that started 46 days before the election, thank you. And last, to the city staff that went above and beyond to help with these services we provide our residents. I hope I'm not forgetting anybody, but Adra Etsel, Mary Olson, Sandy Linden Felzer, Kelly Thielen, Kevin Lamson, Mackenzie Elgar, Brad Sherrill, Tony Black, Brent Colis, Craig Reichels, Kevin Jacobson, and Jason Combe. Just a couple of things that they helped with would be lifting and delivering heavy equipment so our election judges didn't have to. The traffic control in the cold rain assembled over eight booths, picking up city equipment after the day, being knowledgeable and answering countless phone calls, assisting voters, helping with direct balloting and setup. Basically, they worked extra hours when they could be spending time with their friends and family, but instead they were willing to be good teammates. So thank you. And we all come from different walks of life, and I know it takes a village. And with that said, I am proud to be a part of a village we call Atsigo, the friendly meeting place. Or as one of our head judges would say, teamwork makes the dream work. So thank you. I'm hoping at this time, the judges and city staff could maybe get a picture with council.
We, we would like to invite them, the audience, you can't see them unfortunately, but we're going to have them come up front, so you'll be able to actually view them. And we were just talking, we, we think the picture should be of them. We're hoping that the Star News will put it in the paper. But it's really you guys that did the work, so the picture should be recognizing you guys. So we're going to ask you guys, we're going to exit, exit stage, right? You guys are going to come up here, and we want to get a picture of you guys. Um, let's take the picture and then you can make some comments because I think we have some comments also. So we're asking you to stay online, Bethany, please. So let's take the picture and then grab some comments.
Oh, makes my heart melt. I wish I wasn't there.
There we go. There we go. Tim's the back. Oh, there we go. Perfect. All right. Thank you, guys. Okay. So there were some comments that wanted to be shared. So if you have any comments, you can come up to the podium, state your name and address in regards to this.
Hello, I'm Ann Ness from 8254 O'Brien Avenue, Northeast Atsigo. I've been doing the elections for probably about eight of them. And I just want to say that from the 2020 to the 2022 was such an amazing difference, not only in the organization, but the little videos that Bethany did for every single position on Election Day. So if you weren't, if our judges weren't familiar with exactly what it should look like, we all had a video for it. And the color coding and the triple checking of every single eye being dotted and T crossed, it couldn't have gone better. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have some comments that I wanted to share. I received multiple emails from residents that wanted to pass these on. So this is for you, Bethany, specifically. I wish you were here. That they said in the tough moments, Bethany was always able, able to quickly tackle problems and do it with a smile. She was always organized and willing to assign and delegate tasks. She made her own short training videos, as Ann just said, to help train all the judges on the various positions that they needed to learn. She was respectful of the volunteers' time and used it efficiently and effectively. Bethany's skills and wonderful attitude were amazing from start to finish in the election process. She is a quote unquote gem and deserves to be recognized. Her dedication to ensure that the election process in Atsigo was ran effectively, accurately, and with her integrity in the process, never waived, never waived. And I wanted to also share that last week, Precinct 4B was selected as part of the Wright County verification process, and we passed with flying colors. It was exactly on. So I think that speaks volumes to all of you guys.
Thank you.
So thank you again to all of the election judges, and also thank you, Bethany. I think for people to take time to send an email and to be here and say the things that they did, you absolutely went above and beyond. And again, as you said, the, you know, being part of a team is, is makes the dream work, but you really are a great leader in that sense. So thank you. And I, again, will speak for the council, but we appreciate all the time that all of you put in. So again, thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
And I think the plan originally was supposed to bet you guys were going to go to happy hour after, but maybe, maybe Bethany can zoom in at happy hours.
Although I'm feeling a lot better, so yay.
I'm staying here.
Somebody, everybody on Zoom. Bye.
All right, we are still under the open forum portion of the meeting. This is where you can come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit comments to five minutes or less. Would anyone like to speak? All right. Seeing no one come up, we will move on to item two, but I will also say if you guys want to leave, you're welcome to. We'll take a little pause and let you guys exit. Thank you again.
Thank you, judges.
All right, so we are under item two. Consider our agenda for approval. Does anyone have anything that they would like to add or delete at this time? Where's a motion would be in order?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I'll move to the agendas written.
My second.
Okay, motion by Brittany, seconded by Jeff. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Item three is our consent agenda. A motion would be in order of Tom.
Well, Madam Mayor, could we take out 3.12 and Adam, would it be appropriate to put it under 6.1?
Yes.
Okay, so requesting moving item 3.12 to item 6.1.
Yep.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I'll move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Okay, motion by Brittany, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those, both same sign. Motion passes. Item 4.1 is the Atsigo Creek Hydraulic Study. Ron.
Thank you, Mayor. So for point development, we have to clean that creek or do a creek rehab project through that section. It's about three eighths of a mile of the creek downstream of the areas that we've already done this Atsigo Creek rehab before. We met with the DNR and in order to get the permits to do that, we had to do some additional modeling that we weren't anticipating. That had to do with the new FEMA floodplain that is extended to go over Atsigo Creek. Previous to that, the FEMA floodplain was on the Mississippi River and the Crow River. And the latest one that they're planning to adopt in 2024 includes Atsigo Creek. So the DNR requires the city of Atsigo prove that when they put in this rehab and also additional trunk culverts for crossings of streets, that there's no zero stage increase. I mean, it's during the hundred year flood event that the storm water level does not increase any, so that it's all passing through just as, as if it was an open, open ditch as it was before. So that required AE2S that was doing the modeling for us, and they were using a modeling program called XP Swim. FEMA program is HECCRAS, so they had to redo the second model over the same area. We like XP Swim because it models the area very well for storm pipes and storm ponds going into it and gives it a good timeline of where, when that flood stage will hit. But FEMA and DNR require HECCRAS, so the original price for this was 18,500 and doing it a second time using HECCRAS is additional 18,500. So we're recommending city council proven amendment to the professional service agreement that we have with AE2S for that modeling.
Also questions.
Mayor?
Yes.
I would add that we collect money from all the developments on a per acre basis, you know, within the Atsigo Creek watershed area. And that's what ultimately pays for this work as being completed.
Thank you, Tom.
Madam Mayor, Ron, you said we had already spent 18,500 on a previous model?
Correct.
That, when, when did we do that?
Oh, that was in summer.
The summer.
Yeah.
And so now this additional 18,500 is for redoing the whole thing or just a portion?
Doing it through a different model. So it's the same area, but it's, it's a different computer model system.
Just seems like 18,500, even though it's through a different type of model, seems like redundant.
Yeah, I, I agree, but.
And they would have the data like you would think.
Yeah, I mean, there might be some changes, but it shouldn't be.
They are significantly different models. Just the, how they're run.
And that was something.
And the DNR was. DNR was insistent. I was stating that it's not an adopted FEMA floodplain yet. It's not being adopted now until 2024. And I wasn't sure why this is a requirement at this time, but we don't have that approved, but they were insistent that we meet that requirement in order to get the permit to clean the creek. Of course, we're looking to clean the creek next summer. And we have plans quite, quite far along at this point, and we'll be turning in these, these permits pretty soon.
They're going to force us to do another model?
Or they, next year?
I don't think there's any more models to do.
Have we ever been, yeah, I mean, I guess I struggle a bit, and I know that we need the permit from them to go ahead and do this next summer, but just it seems late in the game for them to all of a sudden say we have an additional requirement. And then, and obviously AE2S has to do the work and there's a cost to that, but how, what, what's the disconnect? Why didn't we know about this?
Well, we met with them, and this was, this was a requirement back in, in September. It's just that I'm getting around to bringing it up to you at this point.
Okay.
That was my error.
Madam Mayor. How, how do we know that there's not going to be another model?
Because the meeting that we had, that was the only requirement. Additional requirement.
Mayor, I guess with all, Madam Mayor, with, with all the work we're doing with AE2S, I would think they were people in, in knowing what model to put in place and be in contact with DNR. I mean, I'm guessing they contacted them before they went and did the model that they used before the DNR also at some point time down the road and said, no, do this model.
Um.
I know you're not AE2S, but I just, I don't just.
Well, it, it wasn't, it, it isn't an approved FEMA floodplain. That, that's kind of the, the change is that they're requiring it. So I'm pretty sure that, you know, we went into this looking at it as provide the model show that we can pass the water through the, through the storm sewer system that we're placing. Um, but then they had their FEMA team from the DNR there, and they're the ones that stated that, no, we additionally need to show that when we put this, these culvert sizes in, that we're not increasing the flood stage.
If I asked the question, if we said, hey, we're not going to be doing another model, what happens?
You don't get the permit.
You don't get the permit. And if we don't get the permit, then we won't clean the creek.
Madam Mayor. I'm having a hard time with this.
Yeah.
I just feel like the ball was dropped. Somebody dropped the ball. I, I don't know, and I'm not here to point fingers. I mean, first of all, we're, it's anticipated, anticipated to be what a FEMA floodplain and anticipated in 2024, anticipated. Well, that's not confirmation. Why we're in, we're going to 2023, so why? I don't agree with this. I don't agree that we should have to pay 18.5 again. Of course, anticipation. And why didn't we, why didn't we do it right the first time?
Well, Madam Mayor, it just, to Tina's point in kind of the issue I have, I think it would be good to sit there and talk with AE2S. They're the people that have been in contact with DNR and stuff before approving this. Does this need to be approved?
Right.
Well, I mean, in order for me to get the information from AE2S or to send in, to get the permit, so we can get the bids out.
Yep.
To have that done in a timely manner, so we can get construction started in May. You know, we, we've got to get it, it's, it's better to do the plans and specs approved in, say, January, get, get the permit, get plans approved, advertise for bids, um, get a contractor lined up well in advance of when the construction starts. If we wait too long, a lot of the contractors could, that would bid on this may have filled their project list for the summer, and we're dealing with fewer and fewer potential contractors bidding on it.
And obviously, I don't want that to happen over 18,500. So I'm faced with kind of the option for a dilemma of this doesn't seem right, but at the same time, by holding this up, it could could cost the city actually more in the long run. So that's one struggle is having this decision made at the December meeting. Is that jeopardize things in your opinion, or?
Well, it just pushes it back two more weeks.
Yeah, right. But does that?
I, I guess we can hold off and invite an AE2S representative. I mean, I was in those meetings also, so.
And but. You can finish your comment.
Oh, but as I'm looking at this, we did the modeling based on uh, the floodplain in the Atsigo Creek not being in that, and then the DNR later came in and said, you need to include the Atsigo Creek in the floodplain into the model. It, it isn't, it, it's the stage increase, correct?
So Ron, you made a comment before you said my, it was your error back in September, so give me the timeline, start to finish.
Yeah, my, my error would have been bringing this forward much sooner with the change order.
So it still would have been the same change order because we would have already done the work. So the 18.5 would have still been on the table because it already was done the other way.
Correct.
Okay. I was looking to have you pay half, that's why. Why not? Right? Wanted to see where the error was to make it so. Um, I guess I would like to hear from AE2S also. I mean, we work with them and have on a lot of projects, and so to come back with the same price that we've already paid, and I get that's a different model, but they have most of the data, and I know you said it's a different program and I'm going to need a little bit more justification to pay the rate that they're asking.
I need to understand it because I just, they don't understand.
I don't understand either. It, it doesn't make any sense to me.
So, but. Sorry.
Okay.
Yeah. They're mine.
It would be good to have that conversation.
So we will, we will table this and we will bring back more information through the December meeting in regards to this.
Do you need a motion to table this or?
For the record, I think that's appropriate.
Madam Mayor, I'll make motion to table item 4.1.
I'll second that.
December. What? Well.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Jessica. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Okay, moving on to city council reports and updates. First one is heritage preservation.
My update will be the same as last time. We will be, OHHPC will be meeting December 15th at 7:00 PM.
Next is park and recreation. Brittany, you covered that.
Yep, so again, Gabrielle from HKGI was there at our park and recreation meeting and reviewed the importance of the wayfinding signage and just the steps moving forward as far as what signs will be replaced where, what will start first. There were some comments about the actual sign itself and the posts and what kind of material we would be using. Otherwise, some of the signs might, will most likely be implemented in spring of 2023. Um, and then on the consent agenda tonight was just Jim Breibach's resignation also. And then, so just, I think we're in a, well, address not here, but we'll send a letter usually to the commissioners. That would be good. And then the stand today, December 10th, 10 AM.
And tonight we have the tree lighting, which is a good, good attendance out there. All right, next, Planning Commission, Tom.
Did not have planning commission.
All right, public safety, Tina.
Uh, public safety, we have a couple commissioners leading us. They are moving out of Atsigo. Paul Fields and Jim Breibach are moving out of Atsigo. So we're going to need some more commissioners for public safety. Um, let's see. Couple notes I just had, there's been, as Jason mentioned, or not Jason, it wasn't Jason the other night. The gals, I can't think of their names.
Kyla.
Kyla, yeah. Um, that mentioned there's been some domestic uptake, and that means that that's in their homes that they've been seeing under 10 crashes, which was good. There hasn't been a lot of that out there, caffeine, most recently. And that was really about it. I don't know if you've got anything more, or it was kind of a quick meeting. It's pretty quick. Yeah.
All right, we saw under commission or city council reports and updates. Does anyone else have anything? Then we will move on to item 6.1. Tom had pulled that off. It is the contract. The fire protection agreement with the city of Albertville. Tom.
I just a question for Adam. When it's talking about the few changes that was listed for fire inspections and payment. Is, I see in this motion that it is budgeted. Was this actually in our operations budget?
Correct.
Okay. I just saw that there were changes, and so I was just more sure that.
No, the, the fire inspections would be additional services above and beyond that aren't outlined specifically hour for hour, depending on what sites would be inspected.
Is that something that we pass on?
We pass along to them if the city is interested in having them do inspections of those locations.
Okay.
But that's at $50 an hour. So in the Albertville coverage area, there's only a handful of commercial industrial type buildings that would qualify for this type of inspection. So at, at most, we're looking at probably five to 10 hours of work.
And this contract is from January 1st to?
It would be effective January 1st, 2023.
Any other comments? Okay, and we need a motion to approve this.
Madam Mayor, I'm making a motion to approve the fire protection agreement between the city of Atsigo and the city of Albertville.
Second.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Alright, we are still on staff reports and updates. Sabrina.
Thank you, Mayor. No updates.
Okay. Adam.
Mayor, none from any other.
Wow. Alright, Dave.
Nothing from me, Mayor, thanks.
Dan.
Thank you, Mayor. Nothing from me either. Just want to get back to Kurt.
We, we have to workshop before the audience.
You're right, you're on the record, dude.
They might not get our joke.
Lots of slides. Ron. Alright. And Jason.
Madam Mayor, I would just like to say Dan doesn't have a lot of jokes either. So it was I guess kind of a shock actually that you made.
I thought he was trying to be funny.
More people laughed at that than you.
Alright, good evening.
Good evening. I guess just to touch on deputies that have been at the public safety commission meeting, you know, when they, they comment about maybe an uptick in domestics, typically this is the time of year when we see that. I flat out, there's a very large correlation between the holiday season and that type of call. We will see that until probably about January second. There will be that type of uptick. I would say that was completely on pace with the weekend. Thanksgiving weekend, typically that Wednesday night is biggest drinking night of the year. That's just how it's always been. So naturally, we get a lot of calls just across the board. We will see just uptick in calls related to the holiday weekends, like I said, until January second, and then it gets into the winter lull, and that's where we typically see a huge drop off in call. So right now, we're kind of dealing with a rash of stolen items. I don't know if typically what ends up happening is the prices of copper or different raw materials will go up. I can usually figure that the prices have gone up because all of a sudden I'll see all the reports on theft. So we do have a lot of copper thefts that have been happening here in the past week or so, as well as a couple of vehicles, couple license plates. Kind of the larger items, not so much the catalytic converters. There's been a couple of those. I think there's actually one or two just right from the movie theater over in St. Michael. So they're just getting right into where there's a large group of cars and getting into that stuff. So I know we have one or two vehicles, I think actually three, three vehicles that are outstanding as far as stolen within about the last two weeks since my last update. So that I'm aware of at least. That's just vehicles. I think we've had like a Bobcat stolen. I think we've had an ATV stolen. So just random uptick in that.
Wow.
Tis the season.
Jason, did you say, did you say when you were saying copper and autos, did you say license plates were also being?
Yeah, we'll see a lot of license plates that are taken off. Typically, the front license plate is ripped off somebody's car. They'll rip it off and they'll put it either on their own vehicle or do something with it. They can go commit crimes, and then all of a sudden it becomes interesting to us. We take the call and we have a certain license plate or typically we, we see other agencies will call us. And they'll say, hey, this person was just involved in whatever type of crime, whatever type of theft, et cetera. Can you go over to the house and figure out what's going on there and, you know, follow up on that? We get to the house and they're like, you're talking about the most law-abiding citizens who haven't ever had law enforcement contact in their sixty years. Well, can we take a look at the front of your car and turn off all this? So there's a license plate taken off. So lots of times, most people don't even know.
No.
I would say most people don't even know that their license plates were taken off, especially their front one is ripped off at Target or they went to work and it was ripped off. So get a lot of that and kind of comes kind of a logistical thing because then we have to report that, we have to report that that license plate has been stolen. The biggest piece of it is then to tell the owner of that vehicle, please take off your rear license plate and go with the DMV because otherwise we have to plug it in. It's a stolen license plate. If you don't take that rear license plate off.
Pull over again.
And you get.
How?
Yeah.
Oh.
Oh, my gosh.
We've run into that a lot. So I think that's all I.
Think everyone's gonna leave tonight and sure they walk in front of their cars for the rest of the season. Alright. Does anyone else have anything for Jason? Alright, thank you.
Thanks, Jason.
Thank you.
Alright, if you don't have anything else, and a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Tina. Is there any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Meeting is ended. Thank you all for attending. And council, we will go back to our special meeting.
Quick comment. Were you clicking or were you cracking?